Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting of the city of Socorro, City Council meeting is set to begin. Gentlemen please move your hats and everyone please sign off on that time. No disruptive behavior or officers will be tolerated and by the way there's a subject for objection in post.
Six oh four, the meeting is now called to order. At this time, Ms. Claudia Cobos, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Item number two, Establishment of Cora.
Loretta Rodriguez.
Here.
Cesar Nevadas.
Here.
Ralph Toran.
Here.
Mayor Galian Espia.
Here.
Victor Feres Santos and Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Mayor, announce the life by just at the front. We have Honor Guard present. Left. Freeze. Cover.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas pledge. Honored to Texas pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag. One nation, under God, indivisible.
Order. Arms. Ready. Cut. Very close. Close. Cover. Freeze. Arms. Order. Arms. Ready. Two. Right. Base. Order. March. Easy. Hold. Right. Left. Base. Order. Arms. Right. Good. So everyone, I'd like to introduce you to the Socorro Police Department Honor Guard. This is the first time that they've been seen in public. This is their new Honor Guard uniform. At any of the events that we attend from now on, this is how the officers will be dressed. This is our community officer and K nine Officer Aguilar, Corporal Benavides, Detective Friere, and Officer Escudero. As part of their, as part of their uniform, we do allow them to wear an Honor Guard pin. They have not received it at this time. We're going to do that right now tonight. So I'd like to invite the council if you can step in front. I'm going to give you an Honor Guard please. So what I'd like to do, if you could, one at a time, the doctor, Officer Escudero, present him with this. You can just put it in his hand. Oh, okay, I'll give you one later on. All right, if you'd like to stop, Dr. Escudero. I've got a free time. Order. Arms. Ready. Cut. Right. Base. Order. March. All right, some last of the photo.
Okay, ready? One. One, two, and three.
Thanks, fans, appreciate it.
Item number four, public comment.
Mayor, we have several speakers. Our first speaker is Lorena Rodriguez.
Ms. Rodriguez, you have three minutes.
Three minutes. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm Lorena Rodriguez. I'm against the rezoning of eight thirty-three Westbert Road and the zoning of eight thirty-three Horizon Boulevard. Guillermo and Claudia Gondeta, business owners of Socorro Iron and Metal, are requesting a rezoning from a R one residential to a C two general commercial. These properties are in violation of Division nine, C two general commercial district, section forty-six, four hundred and thirteen permitted uses. Properties are not following the C two regulations and city code ordinances. Properties are being used as semi-truck and trailer terminals and semi-truck engine and tire repair. Also Judge Reyes has granted the Gondetas the use of their residential property for commercial use from September to December tenth, two thousand nineteen. Requesting the city board members demand the Gondetas to cease the use of this property until they are zoned properly. I believe the judge erred in the extension and use of the property. On November fifth, two thousand eighteen, council board members voted on eight thirty-three Westbert and denied them the rezoning from R one to light commercial zoning. Siding. Truck route, Article three, heavy oversized and other commercial vehicles, Division two ordinance one seventy. The Gondetas companies, company semi-trucks and trailers are using Westbert, Restport Road, Spark Road and surrounding streets. These streets are not designated commercial vehicle truck routes. They have been cited by the code enforcement department and continue to violate the city code for more than a year. The Gondetas are repeat offenders and should be fined daily until the violations are corrected. We, the homeowners of Westbert Road, Sparks Road and the surrounding neighborhood, are fighting to preserve our neighborhood, community and our historic district. Which brings me to the Socorro Texas comprehension master plan. Land use six. Siding land used in Socorro shall be attractive and reflect the city's unique history and small-town atmosphere, displaying recognizable image and sense of place to residents and visitors. D strategy, make enforcement of the zoning and building codes a high priority in the Rio Vista district. Plan and the Socorro Texas code of ordinance and vote to deny. And I request you all to vote no against the rezoning. Thank you.
Pat Gardea. Ms. Gardea, you have three minutes.
Okay. My name's Patricia Gardea. I don't live on Burt Road, I live on the street before it. I walk my dogs that way all the time. They have a white dog that's running loose, that they don't do anything about it. Their trucks are parked catty corner, they're just parked all over the place. I've lived there since eighty-one. I've been coming down here since sixty-one because my aunt lives off of Burt, but on the other side of Burt. There is a tree on the corner that the trucks are damaging. That tree has been there as long as I've been alive and I'm fifty-nine. And if you go by that street, excuse me, you'll see the tree where it's all been jabbed and it's dying. And Monday or Tuesday, I was coming home. One of their trucks was parked on Burt. And if you, if you had to turn onto the street, you couldn't turn onto the street because he was parked right there. And I couldn't take a picture of it because the traffic was too heavy. So I thought, well, I'll go around the block and I'll get a picture of the truck. But by then, the truck was already gone and there was people out there, they had a bonfire and they were sitting out there drinking and they had their trucks going. And I know that area is supposed to be for farming animals. There, you know, you gotta be nice to your neighbors. The Gondetas, they don't care. They, they don't care if their neighbors are complaining. They think they're God or something because they're Gondetas. So what, you know, if they were on the city council and one of them was mayor? They can't get away with it. And they tried to bring this up last year. You guys voted it down and now they're bringing it again, but it's worded different. And they bought the property behind them and they tore the fence down and started parking trucks back there without you guys giving them permission. And like she said, they have been fined and fined and fined and you guys don't do nothing about it. What's the use of having people to go out and find somebody? And they, sure, they pay the fine, but here they go doing it again and you guys don't shut them down. You guys don't tell them you gotta move your trucks. This has been going on for almost two years. They have that little corner house that they used to sell junk out of. And now the other house, nobody lives there. And they think, oh, well, since our property faces Horizon, we're commercial. But the back property isn't. It's for farming, it's for farm animals. You gotta be nice to your neighbors. Like I said, they're bullies. They think they could get away with whatever they want and you guys are letting them. You guys, sure, like I said, you guys fine them, but they pay it, you guys don't shut them down. So of course they're going to keep on doing it. What's the use of having somebody on the council, you guys don't do anything? Thank you.
Tom Hick. Mr. Hick, you have three minutes.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address this situation that I've been dealing with since I've had the displeasure of having semis move in next door to me. I have handed you a copy of the citations that Mrs., our Officer Workman, has filed against the people we're talking about, the Gondetas. And we've also did the, the request to find out what happened. Because we woke up one morning and all of the vehicles are parked across the street. And the word came to us that he was giving a opportunity to change the zoning on the piece of property. And he had until December tenth to respond to that. As you, if you see it's in the paperwork I've handed out. My request basically goes to the city itself, the attorney for the city, also the clerk and the planning department, that the people who have signed the petition voiced against the zoning change be called as witnesses at that meeting on the tenth, so we can express what's going on to the judge. And also, we would like the officer that wrote the citation to ask the judge and file a motion to hear other evidence in this matter. That would come from the direction of the council. If they would please direct the city clerk, the planning department to, to involve all of us that have signed the petition as witnesses to this matter. Thank you.
Melisa Pina. I'm sorry, thank you. Maria Valdez. Ms. Valdez, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Maria Valdez. I live past the two hundred feet where everybody gets notified about what's happening with the Gondetas. Over two hundred feet, I could still hear the noise. But aside from all that, we have families, my neighbors, that are concerned with what they're doing. They get fined, they paid it, they, they just pay it. To them, it's what they want to make money off of. They have other businesses. Why is this the only one that matters to them? They might be the property owners, but they don't live there. We all do and we're here with our families. Till this day, we still don't have an attorney, a lawyer, anybody to represent us. We represent ourselves. And every time we show up here and it's like a broken record that we gotta state our case and, and tell you guys how we feel and what it's affecting. The way they're cleaning out their trucks, it's causing contamination. We share irrigation rights, water canals. I have pecans, fruit orchard. We eat the food, the fruit that we grow, we donate it to the church. But if they continue to wash their trucks and make a mess out of things, what are we gonna have left where we live? My mom's seventy-two years old. There's a seventy-two-year-old, thirty-year-old, forty-one-year-old, five-year-old, nineteen-year-old who we all work our land because that's what we take our pride in. And what do they do? Just make a mess out of it. We have our family, our livelihood is there. They don't have to do that stuff. They're living in their nice little homes with their fancy trucks, having a good old time. When we're having to come here with our families, take time to keep fighting this, why? I don't understand that. We're here for three minutes. We have three minutes to state our case. We have evidence, they have records, pictures, videos. There's been animals that have been killed over this. What are we, what are we waiting for? My child? For something to happen to her because of them? Where they don't clean up their, their trees, they let it fall on the barns, they let them do whatever? What else is it gonna take? Because two years later, here we are again. It's getting old. They don't care. I'd like to see his family support him the way our families are supporting us. We're just asking for you guys to do the right thing. That's it.
Becky Hernandez. Ms. Hernandez, you have three minutes.
Okay. Thank you for allowing us to voice our opinions. I too wanted to voice mine on item number thirteen. And yeah, my concerns are also the big trucks that, that are there in our residential area. We also have school buses that go by there and they pick up kids and they drop off kids that go to Hilli. And we also have, there's also children that live across Horizon on Burt Road East that also attend Hilli Elementary School. And that is a big concern of ours and, you know, that road is, it's not equipped for these big trucks. Our neighborhood is not equipped for this type of, of business. Our residential rights are being violated. There's just a lot of safety, safety, safety issues. And, you know, my neighbors and, and I, we all have, well, I have a little baby granddaughter, but my neighbors have bigger kids that, that love to, to enjoy their neighborhood and take a walk and go see the animals and visit their, their neighbors. So yes, it, it is a big, big concern. And, you know, we hope that you all really consider, consider our safety issues and, you know, do not allow for this rezoning. I'm sure there's, we, I feel that this is not the proper place for that type of a business. It's, it's right, right there where the residents are and it's, it's just not a good place. So please, please use your best judgment, your better judgment and look at all the safety issues that we are presenting today. Aside from noise pollution, we can just go on and on. We have raised the problem of noise pollution. There's, they're just using that residential property like a garage, basically. There's a lot of pounding of metals and changing out tires and just everything that has to do with eighteen, with these big, heavy commercial trucks. Not to mention, of course, what's going into the ground, chemicals, grease, oil, metal residue, whatever, you know, there's just a lot, a lot of issues. So please, please, please use your better judgment and do not allow this rezoning. Thank you.
Daniel Portugal. Mr. Portugal, you have three minutes.
Okay. Well, for information purposes, personally, the Burt Road, number one, should have been Beto when they originally named the street. The next street, Tortuga, should have said Portugal, but the contractor that's doing the construction confused Beto, Portugal with Beto, with Burt and Tortuga. My dad is in the baseball hall of fame. He was in Pearl Harbor. He has a lot of things attributed to his success. And we have been owners of the property for over six decades. Which under AG laws says that we also have historic value in our agricultural products that we have, whether it's beef, whether it's farm animals, whether it's chickens, whether it's goats, whether it's the chickens for the eggs or whatsoever. I'm requesting that the zoning commission deny any proposed amendment to the city's Socorro plan. My property is on eight twenty Sparks Circle, seven nine two seven, with the United Postal Service delivering mail with a rural ride of twenty-seven eighty-two. To which I personally have owned up to seven horses on my property and cattle and steers. And as my family, we have had continuous irrigation rights and have respectively taken care of our property. I also have the inherent responsibility to ensure that this property is rural and is kept that way and has been described in historic records. It is, they are extremely detrimental to the lifestyle of our lives, our lives, our livestock because of the commercial vehicles that have caused nuisances with their horns. Just this year in August, one of the mayors ran into the fence when they were fooling around blowing their horns and killed himself in the fence. This horse, which was a mare just directly behind the property, has a colt that is currently right now, two and a half months old, that doesn't have a mother because of those vehicles. The Gondetas don't care what's going on. And previously I submitted documentation, so it's photos of their trees that are falling on my barns, my barn, bar, my hay barns, my cat where I hold my horses as far as the pins, the stalls. It has crushed them and damaged them, so they have killed horses. They've damaged my stalls. There's pictures of trees going into the roof of my place and they could care less. And you can ask them if they've contacted their insurance company and if they've tried to listen to me about their inability to follow their inherent responsibility to take care of their property. If they can't take care of residential property, what makes you think they could take care of any commercial in a rural area? So I'm asking you to consider the laws that are AG laws that are protecting us to have horses, have large animals, cattle, goats and steers. And they are abusing Burt Road, which is a residential road to which Mr. Gondeta has indicated that yes, he does use it. And under that road is where the irrigation water comes through. I don't know how many of you people were alive back in the sixties when I-ten caused damage because of the diesel trucks and they broke.
Mr. Portugal, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Angelica Carrasco Sanchez. Ms. Sanchez, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I want to start by saying, so proud to see the color guard walk in. I am such a proud Texan. And I really want to be proud to be from Socorro, not until a few years ago. It's something that really saddens me. I love my neighbors. We are so united. We are here frustrated. It's not the first time and I'm sure it's not going to be the last time. We depend our selected officials to support us, to be next to us, to hear us, to really make an intent to make a change for the people. I live on Burt. I live with a noise every day. I struggle to get out of Burt Road to go to work in the morning. I struggle to get out of Burt Road to go to work in the mornings. I no longer can walk the street on Burt to go see the horses with my grandchildren. There are men out in that yard, God knows what they're doing. There is no ordinance in that yard. The trucks are parked everywhere. You can tell there's no safety guard. There are containers full of junk, wood, debris that is hazardous to our community. Any spark can turn that on fire. And we have elderly and children. Be it that they might make a change and dump everything and put everything in an orderly fashion, for us to ensure that it's gonna be a continued process, it will not be. Because it never has been with the Gandaras. I feel ashamed to paint a name to such community as Socorro. I really do. It takes me hard because I believe in people. I believe in our city. But I don't feel this family really believes and stands for what we want in Socorro. We love to have our animals. We love our freedom. You know, we have chickens. Not until they went in there and they have that white dog not too long ago, eleven of my chickens were killed. It's never happened. It's never happened. And it's very detrimental to so many other animals. I have irrigation rights as well. You go and see the irrigation canal, it's broken. Please go and see the effect of the trucks coming in and out from Horizon into Burt. The cement is completely broken. Our Burt Road has a crack in the middle. Those machines, those trucks are too heavy to be going through our neighborhood. Okay? They think that they can come in and do this. We have every right to be here. You know, I applaud my neighbors for doing all their homework and coming back with all the citations and everything. And they're pleading, as I am, to you to please listen. Do something. Help us, support us. You are our selected officials.
Ms. Sanchez, your time is up.
Thank you.
Miriam Cruz? Ms. Cruz, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. Uh, I'll be really quick. I just wanted to take some time to thank, um, uh, Ms. Rodarte, Ms. Navarro, um, Chief Burden, Lieutenant Smith, and especially Officer Aguilar, who were able to, um, well, Officer Aguilar was able to help out at, um, Father Saul Uribe's, um, vigil at Saint Peter and Paul this past week. Um, he was a very special person to me and I was tasked with asking for help with traffic control. And I reached out to the city, um, also to the constables and was able to get some help. And so I really wanna take some time to thank them, uh, um, for being there. Um, and like I said, Officer Aguilar. Um, and everything went out without a hitch. It was, it was, you know, there was a lot, a lot of people and so it was very glad, I was very glad that they were there to support and keep everyone safe. Um, and then of course, I just wanna thank the huge group of people that are here, uh, talking and defending themselves. Um, come, come back because, like I said, this isn't, it's not over. It'll probably be at the next meeting, um, where the decision is made, so good on you for standing up for yourselves and unfortunately having to have to do it all over again. Thank you.
Albert Ortiz? Mr. Ortiz, do you have three minutes?
Try to make it short and sweet. Nah. Good evening, City Council Mayor. Uh, my, uh, concern is right now at, um, Inglewood and Nevadas where it comes to a Y. There's been almost two or three accidents, I've observed. I was wondering if maybe we could, should set up stop signs up there. Or s- you know, 'cause I've seen near misses and, uh, people, you know, they don't give the right away anymore, the way some drivers are. So I'm just concerned that there might be a serious accident one of these days, the way people just come down and make, go into Inglewood or vice versa, or go towards the right, as if you're going to Alameda, right? So that's my cons- one of my concerns is, again, maybe we need to do a study, possibly traffic li- stop signs, at least stop signs in the future. Also, another one, and I've talked to Tex- dot before and it falls on deaf ears with them. Stockyard and Horizon in front of, uh, McDonald's, those street lines are literally disappeared. Yes, the other day when it was raining, you really can't see them because of the way the road goes. Now, they just painted the street lines over on, on the gateway, right by Horizon. So, you know, it's like, hey, how come they don't paint our side or down here? So I don't know if you all would, I'd mind giving them a call. You know, see if, uh, it's a safety, 'cause there, that, there I've seen also cars almost colliding and I'm sure they must have had accidents also. And that's about it for right now. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you.
Mayor, those were all our speakers.
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Before we start, can we move item thirteen? Before consent agenda, agenda item?
You wanna pull it out of can?
Yes, I wanna pull it out.
Second. Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez Sessa and Ivan Colombia.
Yes. So item number thirteen is pulled out of, out of consent agenda. At this time, can we have a motion to move number thirty-two next?
So move. Second.
Thirty-two? Do we have a motion?
Thirteen.
Thirteen was moved out of consent agenda and I asked for a motion to move number thirty-two next.
No, no, to move thirteen.
You said to move it out of consent agenda.
Yes, and to move it?
Next.
Next.
Okay. And then after thirteen, number thirty-two?
No, no, I don't, not thirty-two.
I'm asking for thirty-two.
Oh, you were asking, okay, yes.
Do we have a motion?
Yes. Second.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez Sessa and Ivan Colombia.
Yes. Item number thirteen, introduction, first reading and calling for a public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro master plan and rezoning of tract four C seven, block three, Socorro grant from R one, single-family residential to C two, general commercial. Mr. Rodriguez?
Um, I moved this item because I wanted to address some of your comments. One of the things that we, as council, believed in moving the city forward. Um, we don't wanna revert back to the old ways, uh, that the city, uh, used to do business. Um, if you can go back since two thousand and thirteen to today, we have new staff. You know, working hard, our council, the same thing. You know, we want the best for our community and our residents. One of the things I will also say is that if you don't give us a call, we don't know what your issues are. We might think that we're doing a good job, but if your concerns, we address. And I wanna say thank you for all the people that have called, your representatives, so that make sure that wherever the district you are, you call your representative, because that's what we're here for. We're here to serve you. And we hear you when you come and you, and you voice your concerns, because every concern is valid. Don't think that it falls on fa- and on, 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 on deaf ears. You know, we, we do, we're human, just like you. We, we, we have emotions. And we just, at the end of the day, we will do the right thing. Don't think that this is the old way of doing things in Socorro. People still have that misconception that there's corruption, that they, that we do what we wanna do, and it's not the case. You know, people don't come to the meetings to address these issues. And one of the things that I want to let you guys know is that if, if, um, our staff recommends denial, or, let me pull it out so you can-
Planning and zoning.
You can hear this. Staff recommendations. Planning and zoning department recommends denial because of the following reasons. This is a request is contrary to the comprehensive plan. There is limited access for any ingress and egress on Burt Road. The land must be platted, preferably in, uh, to include, uh, tract four C four, uh, to dedicate the necessary additions of right-of-way on Burt Road and improve the access on Horizon Boulevard. Also, our board of adjustments also recommends deny, uh, planning and zoning also recommends denial based on the recommendations of staff and petitions from se- several neighbors. One of the things is that we still have to come and let them have their day. But I want you to understand that they have recommendations for denials. We also, there's always two sides to the coin. So we have to let them know and have their case. But I, I will say that if I had my choice, I will, I always vote, uh, for ninety percent, ninety-eight percent of the time with my staff. Okay? And I know that our council is strong and our council will always do the right thing. And I believe not only in every single individual up here. We will always do the right thing because the right thing is for our constituents.
Ms. Ellos?
I just wanna address to the neighbors, uh, the neighborhood that's going through all this is, uh, we apologize. We apologize for our past council. We apologize for those that have done you wrong. We are not here to, uh, do you any harm. We're here, we're a new council, like Mr. Rodriguez said. And let's start with a clean slate. Don't be angry. Let's work together and get this resolved. Nobody will bully anyone anymore because we are not that council. We will not allow it. And, uh, um, Ms. Rodarte, I would like to ask, when was this presented? I know that they said that they've been here before. In my three years that I've been here, this, this year, this month will be three years, I don't remember this case.
It was a year ago when the last time the, that they were asking for a light industrial use. Now they're asking for commercial.
Oh, no, no, I'm saying the residents, for the residents coming here.
They were here in the last, uh, planning and zoning commission meeting. Which was-
But they were also here a year ago when they tried to move to a light industrial.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
And, and please understand, we can give directives to our, I'm sorry.
November fifth.
November fifth. We can give directives to our staff. We can't get involved though. We cannot get involved. We're not saying that we're blind to what's happening and I'm glad that you all came here today to tell us this is what's going on and, and we're here for you. We are here for our constituents. That's why we're here. Um, our staff has rules and regulations that they have to follow through, either state or ordinances. But, um, if at any time you need to speak to your representative or Ms. Mayor or any of us to say, you know what, we're not, these things are not, uh, being taken care of, we're always available. You can come to the administrative office and request one of us, make an appointment, call us. Uh, we're available. And so I just wanna apologize that you are going through all this. I also live on a farm. I also have irrigation rights and, and I, you know, I also have gone through something similar, not similar, but also a, a struggle and an issue, and I know how angry we can all get. But we're here for you. And I, that's what I wanted to stress out. We're here for you, okay? And so hopefully this situation gets taken care of, um, quickly.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I'll make a motion
Mr. Rodriguez?
To deny.
Second.
And the, and the, and the reason being is because we already tackled this issue last year. It doesn't matter if they wanna change it to a light commercial. We already took and made a decision. Uh, our staff recommends no. Our, our, uh, planning and zoning, uh, also, uh, recommends no. Um, one of the things is that there is a concern. I went out there. We repaved that street. Okay? And I know that because I've been here and I'm the, I was the one to spearhead all of the overlays and, and to fix all these streets. And to see it crack because of the heavy commercial vehicles is disconcerting because that's your money, my money too, all our money. And to see it, you know, just deteriorate so fast, it, it's, it's not worth it. I've seen it where there's puddles of mud and these vehicles drop oils. It, it's not like they're driving, you know, two thousand eighteen's, two thousand nineteen's. I mean, that percolates down into the soil, into the water. Irrigation, all of that, I understand. It's also a health issue for me. It's also a dangerous, I've seen that tree. I've seen where the irrigation, uh, canals are broken and cracked. There's a lot of issues and therefore that's why I'm saying to deny because of those reasons. I've been there, I've seen the damage that has occurred, and we also tackled this issue last year. So nothing has changed today from last year. It's just gotten worse.
Mr. Nevadas?
We're here to help and we'll get this corrected.
Um, you, the council certainly can't deny it today, even though it's an introduction. Um, two things, if if the land, one, just FYI, um, you did, the city did receive a letter from an attorney said he represents the landowner and was asking for a postponement of this item. Council is not required to postpone it whatsoever. Council can act today. Two, if, if the landowner is present or the landowner's representative is present, I would, I would give them an opportunity to speak. Because typically if there's a public hearing later, which they presumably can't speak and if they're here today, they should be, from interest.
So to clarify, Mr. Rodriguez, is your motion to deny the rezoning or to deny the public hearing?
The public hearing? But it-
If the rezoning is denied today, there will be no public hearing.
Could we allow, could I amend my motion to allow if any of the representatives from this property?
I, I don't think we need to do that.
Oh, we don't have to?
No.
Okay, no. Then we'll just leave it at that. Can I have a second?
The president officer, that if there's someone here to speak on that, they should be permitted.
No. Mr. Gandara, are you here or Mr., um, Aguilar? Tony Aguilar? No, they're, they're not here.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez Sessa and Ivan Colombia.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number thirty-two, discussion and action to amend the major thoroughfare plan to incorporate sidewalks, safe routes to school, roundabout analysis and transit elements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Manon, the city planner for the city. Uh, what is before you is a collaborative effort between the city and the city engineering firm. Uh, what we have done is that we've examined the major thoroughfare plan and we've added elements that consist of sidewalks, that consist of transit, and also other components such as the, uh, roundabout, uh, examination. So here, uh, before us would be the engineering firm to give you a brief, yes, sir.
Mike, just right off the bat, Mr. Medina? Mr. Medina, I just wanna show this. And I just wanna, a clarification. This is what we're talking about, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how many pages is here?
It's over six hundred pages.
Over six hundred pages to change an ordinance, right? More or less, a master plan. So how much time are we looking at was invested in this?
A lot of my time and a lot of the engineering firm's time.
Two months, three months?
No, we're talking about a year.
About a year, okay. So I just wanna just clarify that, that every time we wanna change an ordinance or wanna change a master plan, it takes months and months of hard work and research, money to get things right. Just, when I clear that.
So without a further ado, I'll present, uh, Mr. Reyes from, uh, Danabam Engineering.
Thank you, Mike.
Good evening, council, mayor. Um, thank you for allowing me the, uh, opportunity to, to present the, the major thoroughfare plan. We were here, uh, we presented the, the thoroughfare plan in August of two thousand and nineteen. And, and, and the council approved the plan, but they, they, they asked us to add some items to it, go back and reevaluate, you know, look at some other intersections, uh, evaluate the roundabouts. And then we incorporated, uh, the, uh, master sidewalk plan and, and so I'm gonna kinda give you an update of the complete plan so you'll know exactly what's in the plan and, and kinda give you a little bit of a, of an update where it's at. Like I mentioned, we, uh, presented it June of, uh, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, you know, council requested some following. They, they wanted to evaluate more intersections, uh, do a roundabout study in, of particular intersections. And then to include the master sidewalk- do a roundabout study in particular intersections and then to include the master sidewalk plan in, in, in the actual document. The, the plan itself did not change. The, uh, all the, uh, major thoroughfords were still the same, the study, the traffic study stayed the same. We just went and we, uh, just added to the plan itself. And on the, in the plan, we, we made a recommendation to modify intersections by adding left turn, right turn signals and optimizing signal timings. We're also, we recommend it, signalization where it didn't have any signals at all and we actually, and adding some additional lanes at the intersections. And whatever we, we, we could do to improve the intersection, uh, that's what we did and we, for each one of these, we, uh, these are all the intersections that we, we, uh, included a study. We added some from the last time, but each in one of these, we studied and provided you, um, a layout of existing conditions, the proposed conditions and a cost estimate. Uh, the plan department now has a, a, a cost to, to perform all these improvements and all these improvements are for traffic today and for the future. So they have time to, to put together, include all these improvements in a capital improvement plan. Uh, just the plan department can now look at as time goes through and make improvements, you know, as, I guess as the project allows. This is, uh, I guess is the exciting part of, of, of the plan. Uh, the City Socorro, uh, has gone through to invest in that plan that, that Representative Rodriguez are referring to. Now it's dripping the rewards of that plan. We, um, the plan was, uh, was included in application for what you call arterial one or sixty-eighty-two Boulevard and NPO approved the funding for that project at, you know, and that, that's, uh, that project's going to be, um, future, uh, it's, it's limits to that project from I-ten to the border highway east, future highway, border highway east. A four-lane divided road, it can have storm grain, illumination, sidewalks, bike lanes and very key thing is a bridge over the railroads. That's something that Chief, I talked about earlier, that they have a lot of problems. Sometimes emergency vehicles get stuck at the, in, in the railroads. Now you're going to have a bridge to be able to get over, get across. This project is estimated at twenty-six point seven million dollars. So it's very exciting and we're, we're very close to starting that. We're just waiting for Tech Dot to, to finalize the, an agreement with Socorro for us to start working on that project. Uh, we can't start work until that's approved so they can, actually the, the federal money can, it can pay, uh, us to, to confirm the, the project. This is just kind of a, this is a real, a conceptual layout of, of, uh, the arterial one. You know, this is just, uh, right now they're just lines on, on the map. We're going to have to study various routes and find out which is the best route to get from I-ten down to, it probably start end at North Loop because right now the border highway east is not constructed yet. But we're going to study it to go all the way to a new border highway east, which eventually will be constructed by Tech Dot. Another project that's, uh, that we're, that Socorro is working on and because of this study also is, uh, the extension of the Nuevo Waco Tanks. You see where currently it ended at North Loop. Well, this, this other project now is going to want to extend that project all the way at least to El Alameda. Again, that's going to also include a, you know, it's four lanes, storm grain, illumination, sidewalks and another bridge over the railroad. And that one estimated about twenty-three point three million. That's not approved yet. I think it's very close. I think, uh, you know, they're, they're, they're trying to find funding to get it, you know, fund it to, to start designing on that one as well. And that's just another conceptual drawing from where, you know, uh, the current project, uh, roadway and, uh, Nuevo Waco Tanks ends at North Loop and somewhere it's going to end, uh, where Nevadas intersects, uh, El Alameda. So these two projects are, and I just want to kind of express the hard work from, from your staff to get this done. You know, they, they work tirelessly, you know. My, uh, your, your planning director, Mike Medina, I mean, they do a great job of putting the good application. We support them with engineering, but they put the good applications and, and we, you know, uh, these projects are very difficult to get funding. And you go, if you go to NPO, NPO meeting, you have every city, county, Tech Dot fighting for the same dollars. And, and one thing I want to, we're not here right now, Mr. Representative Rodriguez, is that he goes every meeting fighting for Socorro to get the dollars. Have you all ever seen him? I think they're afraid of him by now, but he, he fights for every single dollar for Socorro. I think he'll be proud how much he does, uh, to try to get, you know, even for sidewalk plans or for, uh, hiking bikes. Um, so it's, it's difficult because there's not a lot of money to go around. Uh, so Socorro got to compete for every, every, every other small town and through county and the city of El Paso. So, uh, you know, it's exciting that they've, they're able to, to get these kind of projects approved and, and you're going to start seeing some progress in, in your, in your, uh, transportation here soon. Uh, one of the major things that, that we, we requested us to look at was the roundabouts. And, uh, you know, it's, roundabouts are, I guess, they're not new, but lately, uh, I think the city's been, El Paso's been doing a lot of roundabouts, Tech Dot's been doing roundabouts. So, you know, they're, they're very nice, uh, uh, features to have in intersection. So I just want to, these are the intersections that we looked at. Uh, there's six of them and we wanted to see the feasibility of actually constructing intersection, uh, a, a roundabouts in those intersections. I just want to kind of point out a, a few things here on a roundabout. You know, a roundabout is not one size fits all. You know, you got to look at a lot of different features to see what size of roundabout, uh, you can, you can build, you know, and it has to do with traffic. What kind of vehicles are going to pass through there? You're going to have school buses, semi trucks, uh, because depending on the vehicle you're going to have there, it's going to affect the size of that roundabout. Um, you know, and that, and of course the size of the roundabout is going to affect right away. So all these factors, you know, you know, they, they go into a big hopper to see what's it going to cost? You know, right away is a big, uh, part of that equation. So when we started looking at all these, uh, you know, the basic considerations, also how many vehicles can those roundabout handle? I mean, they're, if you look at, you can, a mini roundabout can only handle about fifteen thousand vehicles, uh, a day. A single lane roundabout, twenty-five thousand. And then if you're going to go to over forty-five thousand vehicles, you got to go to a, a multi-lane. Now you're talking about very large, uh, struck, uh, roundabouts. The vehicle type is, is one of the most, uh, I guess, that one of the ones that impacts the size mo, the most. And most of these roundabouts we looked at, we considered that you're going to have school buses , uh, driving through there. So you do a school bus, you're going to have a minimum, uh, roundabout of eighty feet diameter. And then, and anything else that, say a, a truck, a semi truck, looking at a hundred, a hundred feet diameter. So that's, that's a very large circle that's going to take a lot of right away. So we, we looked at each, each and every one of these and you can see on the hatching how much right away is required and those, uh, and, and these are the minimum sizes that you can fit in there and a lot of these were influenced by the vehicle types that they're going to be. And mostly it was the, the buses. The buses got to be able to get through there, uh, in order to, to, to navigate through them. I'm sorry, the first one there was at Moon and, and Old Waco Tanks. This one here is at, at, uh, Rio Vista and, and Buford. And you can see how much land you would need there from the school. So these, these roundabouts take a lot of space just to be able to, to build them. Uh, the one here is at, uh, Zibu and, and Bovi. So again, you, you'd be needing a lot of right away from, from the, from the school. Uh, this one here at Passmore and Flor, uh, Magarita, you know, that requires some, really some, uh, farmland in order to construct that roundabout there. Um, Buen and Socorro. And there again, there's, there's a lot of right away and, um... This one here is at, uh, Stockyard and Cielo Azul. And that one there is, is actually impacting, would have impacted residents, you know, in that area. I wanted to, I guess, uh, in the end, you're looking at, at a... Cost. And these costs here, you know, we, we, uh, we compared the cost, what it would cost to build one with regular signals, improve it or with the roundabout. And you can see in most of these, the, the roundabout's more expensive and that's really because of right away. That's where your big cost is. Um, and some of these where we had to impact buildings, we got to actually pay for the, that building itself, so...
Mayor, I have a question on that.
Mr. Rodriguez?
But that cost is not reflected on this amount?
Yes, right away is in the cost, yeah, yes.
So even i- if we have to ac- acquire those two homes, they're...
Yeah, that, that one there at, uh, the Cielo Azul and Stockyard, you can see that one's six hundred, six hundred. That, that one impacts a home, so that's why it's, it's so expensive. And these are, are, uh, cost out of central appraisal, so it might even be more.
It might even be more.
Yeah, so that's, that's where, you know, it, it becomes, uh, a lot of these not feasible to build because of the, the right away. Now, going back to the arterial one, the, the, those projects, we put a new roadway. We will look at roundabouts in those projects and, and the new roadway. So that, that might be feasible to build roundabouts in those, those projects. Another part, part of the plan that, that we were asked to incorporate, the master sidewalk plan. We, uh, we took, looked at the whole city of Socorro and we divided it into twelve segments, just random, not by district or anything, but just divided by what we thought was logical, uh, segments. And we omitted all the sidewalks that were included in the, in the, uh, RT, uh, the Safe Routes to School program. So we don't want to double up on, on those sidewalks. So we, we, everything outside of that, we went ahead and we put together a, um, a plan to build, you know, sidewalks and throughout the city. And this is all a cost for every single segment. Uh, again, this is something that Socorro, if they want to put together a plan to build this, you know, in time, you can start one segment at a time. But, you know, we, we looked at two different scenarios of building a five-foot sidewalks with the whole city, you're looking at about thirty million dollars. That's a lot of money. Or seven-foot sidewalks at forty-five million dollars. So it's a lot of money, but if you look at it by segments, you know, it's something that, that, you know, it can be done, but you know, but it'll get, require a program to, 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 to implement that.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thirty million dollars is a lot. But one of the things that, my question to you is, the, this estimate on the sections one through twelve, don't encroach or overlap the safe routes to school, uh, segments, correct?
They do not, we, we...
Okay, so just for the audience to, to know what we're talking about, Safe Routes gives you, uh, state and, and federal funds go to the NPO, okay? And in the NPO, they set aside money every two years so that we cities, and we're talking about everybody in the county of El Paso, which stretches from Anthony way out there to Sierra Blanca. So all of the cities that are here, uh, put bids for these, okay? Very important to do the census so that we can get more money, okay? Very important to do the census. And what this shows is that it, it takes thirty million dollars to do sidewalks for every place in every street for the city of Socorro. That's not counting the two miles from every school, okay? That money, if you add it to that, you, we should be looking at fifty million dollars or more. So that's, that's what we're doing is that the city, outside of that, we're looking at thirty million dollars to try to give accessibility to all our residents. Our budget is only ten million dollars. I just want to throw that out. Thank you.
I'm sorry, uh, more questions? The last portion that we added to the thoroughfare plan was the, the transit plan. Uh, the plan director asked us to look at the, at the, at all the bus routes and Socorro. There's various bus routes that, that operate in, in the city limits. And we, he asked us to look and see where the most feasible location is for covered bus stop with benches. Um, you know, we, we want to see where, and really commonly where you have different bus routes to intersect. So you can't put one in every single bus stop, there's so many. But we want to look at where would be a feasible place, you know, where you have multiple bus stops crossing. It, it might be helpful to, for the resident, the citizens Socorro to, to catch a bus. And these are the locations that we, uh, we, we saw that were the common places, you know, El Alameda and Passmore, Horizon Boulevard, at, at Patty Joe Drive, Socorro at Dendinger Road, Socorro at Bovi. Uh, so we look at those locations and we, and it's really the similar, similar to what San Metro has in El Paso, where you have your, your bench and a covering and, and the, we, we, we've considered the cost and provided an estimate for the City Socorro to implement, uh, you know, addition of those five bus stops. This is, I guess this is the elements that we added to the, uh, to the thoroughfare plan. Uh, it's, it's a living document, you know, it, it may change. It might be something you might want to update in time. Uh, but for now, this is what, you know, it's, it's moving forward. Now the City Socorro has a, as a, a tool to move forward. A lot of these, uh, projects, the, the NPO can get funding. And, uh, Mr. Rodriguez is, like I mentioned, you stepped out, Lohualago was mentioning how you have to fight, uh, an NPO every single, every single month to fight every dollar. And if you don't do that, you're not going to get any money. Uh, so it's, 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 but you have a tool like this, when you submit a, an application and you have a document to back it up, that makes your plan much more attractive and it scores higher and allows you to get more, how you like to, to get funding for that, that project. So, um, I'll have to any questions at this time, if you have any questions?
Mr. Rodriguez?
I'm full of questions because, um, I, I, we started, we started this and tried to, tried to, try to make a better, uh, comprehension plan for the city. Um, the city had one before and it wasn't what the city was moving forward. When the heat, when, uh, when a representative comes up here and says that it's a living document, that means that every so often we would revise it because subdivisions go up on vacant, uh, properties and so forth and so forth. So that's why it's called a living document. Um, but one of the things that I will say is that, uh, with the safe routes to school and, and our plan is that we understood that there was money that we can go and fight for so that we wouldn't use our taxpayer money and, and overlap and have the state or, or federal agencies, uh, help us build it. We can build a, a million-dollar, uh, sidewalk project and the city will only pay two hundred thousand, which is twenty percent, okay? So for one million dollars, how many projects could we do versus us putting in a million dollars? So this is a plan that's going to help us move the city forward. And I just want to thank Daninbaum because it's, it's, and our staff, especially our staff. You know, uh, that's why, uh, Mr. Medina, you know, is here because he understands the vision of what we, council, want the city to grow and how we want it to grow. And, and, and it's something very informative. I think this is going to be on our, on our website. You can look at it and see the good things that we're trying to do. And it's going to be accessible for everybody to walk in our city. We can already see it down when you go on Old Waco Tanks where people walk. You know, I walk it too. Not that far yet, but I'm trying. Um, but you know, when we have, when we have things, it, it, it costs us. And we just want to show you guys what we're doing with your money. We're being responsible. And this is one of the plans that are going to help us, keep us be responsible with your money. Because it's my money too, because I pay taxes, we all pay taxes. So we're being responsible and that's what I want to just say. This is the plan that's going to get us there. It's going to take time because our budget is only ten million dollars. Thirty million dollars just on sidewalks. We still have overlays, we have to fix potholes, we have to put lights, we have to put a bunch of necessities in the city. We're getting there.
Thing is to start when we're doing that.
Any more questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Ellos?
Just real quick, um, I know one of the reasons that I, uh, we talked about this was because of Passmore and, at the corner of Passmore and, um, Socorro, we have, uh, tons of traffic in the morning and they're going, uh, we have kids walking and, uh, these vehicles are going around, around the kids, around the, the street because it's a one-way. I know, I know you gave us this big book and I saw a lot of it, but what are you proposing for that area? Do you remember?
Uh, let me see, which, which intersection was it?
It's, it's, it's right at the corner of Socorro and Passmore. I might have ran to the bathroom.
Socorro, I don't have that one, uh, maybe, I have to look at the plan, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know.
That's okay. If I was, if you remembered at the top of your head, that would be nice to know.
It's on one of your other slides, I saw it.
Oh, okay. That's on the roundabout one, huh?
Yes, and we couldn't, and the reason why is because that's a, that's a, that's a historical...
Right.
That's a historical corridor and the state does not... That's a historical corridor and the state does not allow us to do anything on it, unfortunately.
I think you pass.
Yeah, that one.
Well, that's.
Yeah, but still down.
Yeah, further down.
Yeah, not so far.
That's okay. Don't worry. We'll look at it. I just wanted to.
Yeah, if you have any follow-up questions, we'd be happy to answer them, you know, at all, just take a look at document, you know.
I will, I will. Thank you, I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez? I'm sorry. Mayor Cruz?
Is there any way you could put back the computer, please? So I'd like to request, first of all, thank you for all the work that you guys have done. I think this is a fantastic piece of document. This makes me very upset, this one image. Those are two houses of the people that I know, one of them being my mother. I am not okay with a residential house being taken for this. I know I am the one who requested a roundabout there. What I requested was a roundabout that fits in that intersection. There are smaller roundabouts, smaller than the one that is on that image. Out of all of the roundabouts that are proposed, this is the only one that affects residential property. Not only that, but as you can see, there is vacant land to the left of that image that could be used. I would like to request for this portion to be amended, to either be taken out and then be included at a later time with a smaller roundabout or with different traffic control devices such as using medians that go down stockyard, such as rumble strips, such as there are so many other things that could be done. I understand that it's not, it's a live document, but I'd like to request that, thank you.
Mr. Navarres?
Sorry, let me ask you, was this based on the eighteen-litre traffic that's currently a problem in that area?
As I mentioned, the diameter of these roundabouts are really based on the vehicles that be passing through there and their requirements are, this is the minimum size you can place in there for a bus to be able to drive through there. There's another roundabout just, I guess, north of here, sort of the same size as this one here. It can't be made any smaller because otherwise buses would not be able to navigate through that intersection.
Yeah, because Ms. Cruz has a good point. It's wide enough, but it's a residential area.
Yes.
And we shouldn't have a heavy traffic.
These, this is just, all these roundabouts are, every one of these, we're doing like a feasibility to see, evaluate the feasibility of, that's not going to mean that Socorro's going to actually build them. They have the information at hand to decide whether to move forward or not. Now, this one here, they may say, we don't want to take residential, they may not want to build it, may do intersection instead, I mean, signal or something, but, but these are just our evaluation of those intersections and the feasibility that placing a, a, a roundabout there.
Thank you.
Ms. Lealovos? No, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Medina, and I'll, sec.
I just had something just before, make it real quick. On the corner.
Mr. Rodriguez?
On the corner of St. John's Road and Timber Wolf in El Paso, Texas, they did a small one. It's right here. It's small, I can't bring it up, but trust me, you can Google it, you'll see it, okay? And the issue there is that they put a small one in a residential area, you know, right there, you see those homes? Just like that. Buses can't pass through there. That's the issue, that the standard has to be wide enough to accommodate buses dropping off our children. So therefore, those are the things that we have to address and we have to do our due diligence, that's why our staff and our engineers bring these stuff up because they say, hey, it doesn't meet standards because a bus cannot make the turns. So even if we want to move them, we can't because we're going to disalign the street. Who better to tell us than our engineers than somebody who just wants it? We have to do our due diligence. Our staff make sure that our engineers are giving us the best possible outcomes.
Yeah, and that's been established, so.
Right, and so what I wanted to make the notion is that when we're looking at traffic calming devices that also include controlled intersections, meaning that there's lights, we actually have to follow what are known as the eight warrants. So from the Federal Highway Administration and the tech stop perspective is that we have to justify that there is a need for them. And so the eight warrants are certain classifications, safety is one of them, for example, cost is one of them, for example. So what we did here in the, in the major thorough plan is to look at exactly what the council had asked for. So based on the impression that we would have to take property to begin with, is always one of those contentious things. So going back and analyzing roundabouts, one of the things that we're looking for in the master plan in ordinance is to examine the heavier elements of the arterial, so for example, like Noah Waco Tanks. Hopefully in the next coming weeks, I'll be coming to you for projects that we can nominate for the NPO. So the reason I say this is because a roundabout is eligible for funding at the NPO. In this case, Stockyard is not recognized by the NPO as being what we call federally functionally classified. So the NPO looks at this and says it's ineligible. Now, going back to neighborhood designs, we can come back and exact roundabout to be built by the developers. But going back to those eight warrants, going back to classifications of travel, is that we need to make sure that it does not impede the movement of commerce and people.
Thank you.
Ms. Lealovos?
You answered a lot of my questions, but also another question that comes to mind is, that's a growing neighborhood. You're, we have a lot of new construction there. We have more construction coming. Was, and I guess this question would be for the engineer department, but was that taken into consideration that they would probably be using that, those lanes to get closer to El Alameda or North Loop, I'm sorry, North Loop?
I'll go ahead and answer it. And so what I can tell you is that previous to any subdivision that has ever come before this body or any previous body, there was no requirement for traffic impact analysis. So what that means is that a developer was able to come in and build to build. We weren't able to examine where the traffic was going, we weren't able to see the impact that that traffic is having on the entire city. Now there is a requirement for any developer to come in and provide a TIA. So if a new neighborhood comes in place here, we will exact the TIA requirements.
All right. And I think the question was, was that taken into consideration here? Because even when I saw the picture, I thought, well, this is a big turnabout. But then I, then when he was saying, you know, larger vehicles, but in reality, the only thing that should be going through there is school buses, the larger, the larger vehicle should just be school buses and that's it.
Right, so there is a prohibition of semis traveling in this area, we do have the appropriate signage there. But what we want to emphasize is that prior to any analysis, the development that is there was not required to provide those analysis.
Right, no, I get it. But now we have that new neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Navarres?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez Esasen and Ivan Colombia.
Yes. Moving back to item number five, introduction of Socorro Police Under Guard.
Mayor, the roundabout actually is here, so.
Item number six, presentation of life-saving award to Officer McKinney.
Mayor and Council, Chief David Burton, Socorro Police Department, Officer McKinney. This is one of those occasions where the police department publicly recognizes work that our officers are doing out in the neighborhood. And in this case, it's, it's one of the higher callings that we, that we take care of in the, in this instance and the next one that follows this, the saving of somebody's life. This one's very special because I actually have one of the family members here. And Ms. Seines, if you'd like to come up here. So at the conclusion, I'm going to let Ms. Seines pin Officer McKinney with his life-saving award. And for those of you that don't know how police departments work, this will be part of his, his uniform from this point forward in recognition for his services. Other police officers on viewing that will know that he is, he is one of those individuals that, or humanitarian type individual that went out there and saved somebody's life. So I'm just going to read a brief description, so Mayor and Council and the audience here has, has an idea of what, what occurred. On November 10th, 2019, Officer McKinney was dispatched to a residence on, at the Huaico Mobile Home Park in reference to an 80-year-old female who was not breathing. When he arrived, he found that the patient's nurse was conducting CPR. Officer McKinney took over the CPR and continued until Elite Ambulance arrived. At one point, it was determined that the patient had passed during this process. But Officer McKinney and the nurse continued in their CPR efforts and actually got a pulse. Elite then transported the patient to a local hospital and unfortunately, two days later, she did pass away. Ms. Seines and her children came to the police department where they, where they spoke with Lieutenant Smith. In their eyes, McKinney was a hero because he refused to give up on her mother and her children's grandmother. He was extremely professional, he did not care who she was, what she looked like, but his compassion and the never-give-up attitude allowed the family to spend an additional two full days loving and saying goodbye to their mother. They felt that Officer McKinney, that they felt that another officer might not have had the genuine care and compassion that Officer McKinney displayed that day. They said time and time again that he is their hero and appreciated him going the extra mile when he didn't have to. They wanted his supervisors to know what kind of dedicated officer that he is and wished that he could be recognized for his efforts. It is my pleasure to recommend that Officer Joshua McKinney receive the life-saving award for the Socorro Police Department.
I just want to say thank you, thank you, because, you know, this is the class of officers that we have in this city of Socorro. So that you guys can feel confident that when the time of need and good, work of officers are there to help us. I just want to say with a heart of thank you because not only is this story in the heart of God, it's very warming, you know, it's just emotional because that could be my mom, that could be your brother, your sister, you know, those are the things that I want. And I know that council feels the same, is that we appreciate what our officers do. They don't give a lot of credit. You don't hear this in the media, you don't hear this in the television. I, as well as the council, I can hear you. We thank our officers and we thank them because you guys don't get enough respect, you guys don't get enough thank you. And we just want to make it clear that we know that we do care and thank you for your service. Because.
Item number seven, presentation of life-saving award to Officers Dominguez and Sierra.
Okay, again, examples of two officers out in the community responding to calls, and we never know what kind of call types we get, right? It could be a motor vehicle accident, it could be a dispute with a neighbor, or it could be a, a life-saving situation that, that we're put into where we're called to act. So let me just read about this one. On November 13th, 2019, at approximately 9:27 PM, police were dispatched to a possible suicide medical call in the 9900 block of Morocco Circle. Officer Dominguez and Officer Sierra both arrived on scene and located an unresponsive 24-year-old male who had been found by his parents with no apparent signs of life. Officer Dominguez immediately started CPR on the male and after realizing that this individual might have had a drug overdose, Officer Sierra retrieved his police-issued Narcan kit, which is a, it's a revival-type system that we use. After administering the Narcan and CPR, the male began to breathe. The male was transported to Del Sol Hospital and survived the incident. The officer's quick thinking and action directly contributed to saving the 24-year-old's male life. This incident could have resulted in death and had not been for these officers' immediate actions in providing much-needed first aid. Officer Dominguez and Sierra's actions represent their selfless service to the Socorro Police Department, the City of Socorro and its residents. Both Officer Dominguez and Officer Sierra are here today and it's my pleasure to present them with the Socorro Police Department Life Saving Award.
Item number eight, presentation by city manager regarding October 2019 monthly report. Do we have, do we have coral? Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will provide you October's monthly highlights for our departments. Our Municipal Courts Department collected sixty-six thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars. In the month of October, received eight hundred and twenty-two citations from Socorro PD, twenty-three citations from DPS, and ninety-two ordinance violations. The HR Department had one employee out on intermittent FMLA from planning and zoning. There were three different incidents. There was a civil service meeting on October twenty-eighth to discuss the uniformed overtime policy. We had zero separations for the month of October, and there was two new hires for Public Works, Alexis Soto and Daniel Ramirez. We also had a lateral move from a labor-to-equipment operator, Roland Apodaca. Our City Clerk Department prepared agendas and minutes for two regular meetings dated October third and seventeen, received thirty-two open records requests and responded to thirty-eight, and prepared seven publications. Our Parks and Public Works Department repaired potholes on Patty Joe, Dindinger Place, Dodson, Sudan, Toyota, Moon, and Nuevo Mission, Nuevo Waco. Maintenance, I'm sorry, Nuevo Mission. Maintenance major streets was Buford Vineyard, Middle Drain, Vomen, Bovi, Old Waco Tanks Road, Nevadas Road, Passmore, Peters, Moon, and Rio Vista. They disposed the five dead animals, completed the leveling and trenching for the new modular building, assisted Recreations Department for the Fright Farm, and continued to maintain, mow, and groom all city parks and ponding areas. Our Police Department received two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven calls for service in the month of October. Socorro PD and Horizon collaborated a national night out on October the eighth. They received their modular. Thirty-six arrests were conducted in the month of October. Enforcement continued on different schools within our city limits such as Socorro High School, Hilli, and Huaco. Officers continued training to keep them in compliance with certifications from TICLO requirements. Our Planning and Zoning Department collected forty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-three dollars, issued two hundred and seventy permits, seventeen registrations, eight applications, and fifty-two letters. Our code enforcement did fifty-nine notice of violation, seventy-three cases cleared voluntarily in compliance, and forty-six citations were issued. Our Recreations Department had their Fright Farm on October twenty-fifth. They attended a PIO training on October fifteenth and sixteenth. On October thirty, they attended a social media training from TechStop. On October twenty-fourth, they attended the Rojas Elementary Science Fair. There was no historical land commission meeting in the month of October, and kept up with all social media platforms and media inquiries. Our IT, our IT Department attended the Region Nineteen Cyber Security Workshop, assisted with the creation of the haunted house for Fright Farm, prepared for wiring of the new PD modular, preparation also of the three sixty-five office migration for the whole city, and troubleshooted all IT-related issues. Our Grants Department received an award of thirty thousand dollars from the Texas Historical Commission for the rehabilitation of our Rio Vista Center. They also received an award for twenty-five thousand dollars for Socorro PD's police radios, and also another twenty thousand with sixty dollars for the enhancement of the Emergency Operations Center, continued the leadership towards the establishment of the City of Socorro's Community Initiative nonprofit, nonprofit organization, and continued to work with other departments for grant assistance. I'm sorry, I have a cough. City Auditor conducted an audit field of management system and internal controls follow-up. They finalized the fixed asset management procedure and manual pending approval from council, which will be presented at our next council meeting, conducted an internal review of expenses over three thousand for the fiscal year of two thousand nineteen, and reviewed the purchasing card transactions for the month of September and October of two thousand nineteen. These are just the highlights from every department. I don't know if you all have any questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez Sessam and Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number sixteen, public hearing of an ordinance providing that a portion of Montevideo Street be permanently closed and providing that this ordinance shall become effective immediately. Seven thirty-nine, public hearing is now open.
From the building of the IDEA School and beginning of the school year, there has been nothing but traffic by both the heavy construction trucks, student parents' traffic, and lack of communication from city representatives to at least communicate what's going on. On August twenty-third, my mother and I sat with Mayela Granados to express our concerns. I was advised to reach out to my representative, Victor Perez, but there was no answer, and I left a voicemail. I've left voicemails and texts, and where they were never returned. I continued to email her, and she was the only one that would keep me updated or acknowledgement of receipt. I met with her again, and we advised, we were advised to me, or reach out to Mr. Renee Rodriguez. I emailed him on August twenty-ninth, and again, I was never replied. I just continued to forward photographs from my neighborhood and from other neighbors. Mid-September, IDEA representatives came to the community in Montevideo Street and firsthand saw the traffic and gave out letters to everybody there, and just to emphasize that law enforcement was going to be there, giving citations for those that were blocking the driveways. They were there only for a couple of days, and then continuously, all the traffic keeps going. Even today, I have pictures showing where the, the people, the parents are still lining up, even, we live like at the end of, the start of the street, and they're still packing up all there, and there's lack of, you know, communication, the, you know, there's no touch base to know what is going on. So we just ask that for sure, you know, do something to respectfully just, my time's over, but just respectfully, you know, close that gate. We know that that's coming up on the agenda, and I support that as well.
It's public comment, I mean, public hearing.
I can do my input too, 'cause it's public comment. I'll just get up and talk on the mic.
I know this is orthodox, and, and I guess this is the first time in history that this happens, but, you know, as a resident, I understand. Just to the lady that, that spoke prior, I just wanna say, I'm sorry that I didn't return my calls, but I wanna say that my family is going through something very traumatic. I could not respond to you, but I will tell you this. Ms. Rolarte, the city manager, knows I've called her, I've notified her, and I've let her know the issues and your concerns. She can attest to that. One of the things is that I've been there in the morning, and I've been there when the kids pick up. I've seen it by my own, I've seen people park at the Walmart. The lines are horrendous on both ends. She's correct, because I've seen that cars try to go and pick up their children, and they're on Horizon Boulevard trying to go into the street. I've seen that firsthand. We need to do something about it, we need to address it, because this is an issue about safety. From Horizon to the gate, the gate's not open, it's closed. So there's people waiting there for thirty minutes or so, okay? It's like a first-come, first-served, like a buffet. And I'll put it to you that way, so that you can understand that it, it, there's, there's a lot of issues. Kids walk, you know? What happens with one of these children and one of these cars are, I've, I've seen them. When the gate opens, on the time that I was there, there was four people that almost caused an accident, because they were fiddling with their phones. And this is in a residential area. I've seen it firsthand. I could attest to everything she's said. We, council, have already addressed the issue of widening this street. We brought it up because of the same issues. I just want to echo what she just finished saying. It is a concern, it's a safety concern for our kids, our children. These people cannot move out of their driveway, because there's cars. It's, it's ve- and then they're building an extension right now. If we cannot maintain that type of traffic right now, what's gonna happen later on? Thank you.
Seven forty-four, public hearing is now closed. Item number seventeen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance providing that a portion of Montevideo Street be permanently closed and providing that this ordinance shall become effective immediately. Mr. Turan?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the closing of Montevideo Street to be permanent and to become effective immediately.
Second.
Mr. Turan?
I was there on Monday, and I spoke to about maybe eight or ten families, and from the time I was there, the traffic was all the way to Horizon Boulevard, all the way to the entrance to that school. We spoke to one lady who was obviously going under chemotherapy, and she came out to us and she spoke to us, and if anything were to happen to her, the ambulance service would not be able to get to her. And there's a lot of elderly people, and anybody that's going to work, they have to wait for all those cars to leave. And I, I just don't see that this road, this street should be a thoroughfare for that school. We have Rio Vista, which is a two-lane, four-lane road, that's where they should be going in and out of, not a residential street.
I did send out the city council, they, I know, some of you don't object.
Oh, I did.
But I have a request before I go into executive session, legally, I don't want to resign.
Then I resent my motion.
Second.
Should we move it to executive session or discuss it now?
You can do it now, you can do it again, executive session.
Yep, we'll do it now, we'll do it now. I'll, I'll make a motion to move it to executive session.
Second.
Is there anything else?
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan? Yes.
Victor Perez Sessam and Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes. Mr. Martinez, do we have anything else that needs to go into executive? No? Okay. Figured if we're gonna go into executive, we'd have to.